I'd like to call this meeting to order, please.
Careful.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mrs. Packard?
Here.
Mr. Reddick?
Here.
So, this is our organizational meeting. Tonight, we will take nominations for president and vice president for the board. Mr. Price, do we do them separately or at the same time?
Yes, separately.
Okay.
President first.
So, we will now take nominations for presidential, for the school board president.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Packard.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers. Do we need a second for that, Mr. Price?
No. Any others?
Are there any other nominations? Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Do I say what I was going to?
Yep.
I will now assume the chair of the board. We will now go to nominations for the election of vice president for 2025. I would like to nominate Ben Reddick. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Mr. Price?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is setting the Board of Education meetings for 2025. We have that in our packet, it's Exhibit A.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
I think it was Mr. Reddick.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Are there any concerns with the dates that are outlined in Exhibit A? Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Another part of our 2025 organization is we have Board of Education committees. We have four committees, a city recreation board. Currently, Tom Dunn and Eric Herman are on both of those boards. Their terms are up, Tom Dunn's term is up in '26, and Mr. Herman's term is up December of 2025. We also have the Hainer Board, it's a one-year term. Ms. Borchers is our current representative.
Yeah, and I would like to say, I miss every other meeting because I'm on the Future We Can Stay Board, I will continue, I mean, it's not been an issue, but I will continue, but if someone would like to assume that role, I'm fine with that. It's a one-year term?
It's a one-year term.
A one-year term, yeah. I'll do it.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Do we do this as a slate, too?
Yes, one.
Thank you. OSBA Legislative Liaison is currently Ben Reddick. And this person is who attends the OSBA meetings, they attend the executive session of OSBA. Mr. Reddick?
Yeah, I'm fine, staying on.
And then for Upper Valley, our current representatives are myself, my term runs through 2026, and Mr. Fox. Mr. Fox, I believe you've expressed interest in remaining.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to be on there for another three-year term. A lot of board members on there have 10, 15, 25 years' experience. And so, I think between me and you and maybe one other person, we've got three years or less, everyone else is over 10 years. So, I've enjoyed my time up there, and I would like to ask to be nominated again for that position.
Yeah, I would've done it if you didn't want to do it, but either way, I don't mind, doesn't matter to me either.
But then when you get a watch?
That's not in my future, I don't think, a watch, it takes 15 years.
I think it's motor goggles.
No.
It's great. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Price reminded us that we need an alternate for OSBI.
I can be an alternate.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Price?
Someone would make a mention.
Oh, so moved, I moved that the positions of the board committees be accepted as indicated.
Second.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Something on that topic, I'd like to maybe throw out there, so we've got for the City Rec Board, we've got Tom Dunn and Eric Herman, Eric Herman's term's up at the end of the year. I don't know, does anybody get any updates from either of those two gentlemen about what goes on there, how they impact the schools, or anything like that? I haven't heard anything.
I do not, but I do agree, I think it was possible we should have somebody on the board ante-up for the next term.
Yeah.
I agree, especially it's what we just went through with the properties and that was with the park board.
Yeah, something for us, something for us to consider, like maybe think of who that next person is for next, next time, after Eric's term's up at the end of this year, is maybe who do we want to have on there, starting, I think it's a five-year term for next time, and personally, I don't know, it doesn't have to be a board member, right? We can have anyone from the community.
Correct.
If there's, you know, a staff member, or anything like that could be a good person. Principal, anything like that, so maybe if, as board members and as leaders, if we could keep that in mind on who could be good for next time.
I agree.
We'll relay that to, what's his name, the director down here?
Ken Satter?
Ken.
I will say again, I don't think since then around that we've ever asked either one of those representatives to present or share.
No, yeah.
Maybe they wanted from Mr. Dunn or Mr. Herman, but...
Yeah, I mean, they both had great positions within the, in the school, and I'm not saying they don't represent our school well, but we don't hear any feedback, and Eric's term's up at the end of 2025, so no changes right now, but something for us to...
We'll relay that to Ken Satter.
Thing for next time.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, perhaps we could even, either way, consider them like coming at least once a year, or twice a year to present, if we do, even if we don't get anybody on the board, we should have them come and present.
Or provide something in writing, or whatever.
Yeah, or something, yeah.
Yeah, just an email update even would be good.
That's true, yeah.
Sorry. Presentations?
Yep.
Mr. Piper?
So, our first presentation tonight, January is, let me show a little trip here, January is School Board Member Appreciation Month, so I would like to personally thank these five board members for the work they do. They do a lot here in these board meetings, and also behind the scenes, they do a lot for our schools, for our kids, and for our staff, so if we could, if you'd join me in giving them a round of applause for their service here, I'd appreciate that. And we have a beautiful certificate of appreciation, you can hang on your refrigerator or frame. Mr. Reddick, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Fox, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's not a watch.
Not a watch. Congratulations, thank you.
You know, Mr. Fox and I got a steak at Upper Valley.
And thank you, Mrs. Packard.
You get a what? A steak?
We get a steak at Upper Valley.
That's why he wants to stay on the board, he wants to stay! That makes great meaning, so.
But no, we sincerely appreciate your service to the districts, and thank you very much.
And then, we also have our 2025 District Spelling Bee champion.
We did have, Mr. Hayek, you can see right there. That's okay. Oh, that's from the jury, yeah. We did have our spelling bee just last week, always a great event, and our champion is, what's her name, Tanmei Talam, she's from our Troy Junior High, she's our champion this year. Pretty quick bee, not as quick as last year, but she did a very nice job, as did all the kids. Always a great, always a great event, and we appreciate everybody participating. So, we'll send her a letter of commendation from the board and sign that for.
And thanks for being the pronouncer, or whatever they say that.
It's pressure.
Yeah.
We have some tough words to pronounce.
I can imagine.
I enjoy it.
What Mr. Fong, I think, has done that a time or two.
I know, the big ones.
Yes. We do literally go through the words in my office, and he tells me when I get them wrong, so.
Do we have any board committee?
I have an update from the Hainer. Just, I'll read a little bit, now, for the first time, Matthews, Troy High School graduate and 2009 graduate of Columbus College of Arts and Design, will have its own art exhibit at the Hainer. His ceramics exhibit, Order and Fire, will be on display at Troy Hainer from January 10th to February 25th. So, Mr. Matthews, I'm not sure how long he has been with Troy, but I think it's pretty cool that we have our own very own artist.
Twenty minutes, I can tell you, so keep reading.
It was a long one, I won't...
Went to school with him, so.
You did?
Graduated with him, yeah.
Oh, cool, yeah.
There it is, ten, ten years.
Ten years, okay.
I said fifteen.
Fifteen years.
Did you find that in here?
So, I think it's very cool that we have our own very resident, so, and also, if for all of you husbands out there, there's a Valentine Day Dinner and Show with a comedian, February 14th or February 15th, Saturday, so if you're interested in taking your sweetheart, that would be very nice. And that's it.
I read the article about Mr. Matthews' exhibit at Hainer, and it talks about, you know, how it comes full circle with who we had when he was here at Troy.
Yeah.
And then who's, who's helping with the exhibit.
Yeah, I could've read the whole article, he was in, he did Young Masters, he was in Young Masters, and, yeah, he was a student of Troy, and, pretty cool that it's in full circle, yeah.
I don't have a lot, we had our Upper Valley, they do a dinner for the board at the end of the year, every year, they have a restaurant, if anyone ever has the opportunity to attend, to go to Upper Valley, they have a restaurant there, the students do an amazing job, they served us a full- plated dinner, there were courses, they cook it, they prepare it, they serve it. It's really kind of neat to see the kids, the kids take on what they do up there, and then it was just our end of year. Mr. Fox, did you have anything from that meeting?
Uh, yeah, there, after the great dinner that we had, we went and did the regular board meeting as well, so we still have that. So, they had the application right before our December meeting, so there was 860 applications in the first two days, that was up from 824 from last year, so another new record of that, there was 182 Troy students that applied, and that was the most out of any school district as well, so, just goes in line with the presentation we had from Jeremy Hughes recently, and how they kind of lead those students there, and even many more students are applying there from Troy. We had Tony Trapp, he's the coordinator for the careers, and he presented at the Governor's Executive Workforce Board Meeting, he's traveled, he travels to Germany with the program, he takes, he's gone to Chicago, he's really high-regarded, highly regarded, so he did a presentation for other career centers, and at the Governor's Executive Workforce Board Meeting with employers and whatnot recently as well, so, great representation of the career center there. And one cool thing that the career center's doing is for their construction project, they have, they're doing time-lapse video, so they got a camera going, we saw a little daily snippet of the videos, so I think it'd be cool if we could do something like that as well, on our different sites, if it's possible to look into, coming up once, even as soon as dirt starts getting pushed, I mean, I think it'd be great for the community to see that across all the different sites when they're up, if there's, if there's a way to do that.
We'll certainly do that.
We've already discussed it and planned on it, we did it out with both of the turf fields.
Okay, yeah, 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 we did, so, and, yeah, if there's a way to, I mean, with the live feed, but then if there's also a way to, you know, condense it or anything, and show some sort of time-lapse video, I think that could be cool, once we get enough time in there, so.
Sure.
Yeah, so, good meeting last week, or last month as well.
And then, it sounds like we have some students from Concord with us tonight.
We do, ready for them?
Yep.
Mr. Hayek?
Just a few.
That's, I don't know, I think we have a slide, it's been spinning for a while, so I'm not sure what's happening there. Are the kids gonna, are the kids gonna talk during this?
All right, I'm gonna be very brief, because we have our kids here today, and we have a large group of kids that want to share all the good things that they are doing to support Concord Elementary in many ways, and one of our goals is real simple, is we want a positive community where kids have ownership in that community, and we have a number of kids here today that are gonna share their roles in our community, and what they're doing to support younger kids, and also supporting each other, so, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our leadership group here, that's here today, our PBIS Leadership Group.
Good evening, thank you guys for having us. Do a few students presenting on their student jobs within the building, they are Tier One PBIS leaders, so they lead all of the whole school programs, and help out with students in the classroom, and we really, really appreciate them. Ella, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ella Garlicks, and I assist Mrs. Manier's kindergarten classroom to help with anything that needs done. Sometimes I pass out papers, sometimes I help with work, and on rare occasions, I get to present Google Slideshows to the class. I enjoy being a PBIS student leader, because I get to know the kindergarteners and their teacher, Mrs. Manier, better. I also get to be a role model for the kindergarteners, since I'm a student myself as well, thank you.
Hi, my name is Isaac Edwards, and during my job, I help kindergarteners in Miss Boffler Myers' class with letters and letter sounds, and I enjoy being a PBIS student leader, because I get to know about all the other students I learn with, and they like to enjoy about me. And I form great relationships with the kindergarteners I have worked with during their class time, thank you.
My name is Anna Blackmore, and my job is to help Miss Manier's kindergarten class. She has many bright students that are always willing to learn and do better. They, some of them struggle with spelling and writing, but they do their best to do better. They love me and my friends that also help. I enjoy being a PBIS student leader, because they have a very adorable reaction that is a greeting, a hug, or a wave. I love my job, and I hope my little brothers will someday have the same job as I do, thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan Erdahl, I am a member of the Concord Recycling Club. In my job, I help our school recycle. On Tuesdays during my recess, I walk around the building checking every recycling bin and bringing them out to the recycling dumpster. The Concord and Green Team has been going strong since 2019, and is run by Mr. Lightcap with help from Mrs. Lightcap and Mrs. Delk. We received our supply through the Miami County Waste Reduction Awareness Grant to start the team, and have been partnered with Pepsi's Recycle Rally Initiative ever since. There are 12 members on the Green Team this year, all of which are fourth and fifth-grade students. We collect roughly 1,000 pounds of recyclable materials each year, mostly paper, but also plastic and aluminum items. We also collect and recycle applesauce pouches, pens, markers, English sticks, special bins. Aluminum pop tabs are also collected and donated to the Ronald McDonald House. I enjoy being a PBIS student leader, because I get to help out my school being with my friends, thank you.
Hi, my name is Cohen Hazelton, and at the end of the day, I go pick up kindergarten students from Miss Manier's class. I also go assist Miss Coverman at the end of the day with other kindergarten character lessons. I enjoy helping Miss Coverman with doing arts and crafts with the kindergarteners and other subjects. I enjoy being a PBIS student leader, because I get to make great relationships with other kindergarteners, thank you.
Hi, my name is Etta Lucas, I work as a library assistant for Mrs. Coleman and Mrs. Cole Calhoun. I put books away on the shelves, and I bring the kindergarteners in when they get a little too rowdy. I also clean the tables after all the students leave. I've learned how to shell books correctly, and how to be responsible with children. I enjoy being a PBIS student leader, because I love working with little kids. Once when I was walking down the hall, a kid called me Miss Coleman and gave me a hug. That really made my heart happy. Mrs. Coleman is a big part of our school, and getting called by her name is a wonderful thing. I've spent, I have a great time with the other buddy I work with, and I really appreciate the time I spend in the library, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Ballforce, and I am the loss of sound manager at Concord. Each day after lunch, I put my names on justice pads, lunchboxes, and clothes, and give them back to their owner. I also dump out food from lunchboxes, so if the owner comes down, they will have to have some more food. I enjoy being a PBIS student leader, because it's fun. I like going around and finding the parts that are on it, and making sure that it gets lost by the nap, and it makes me feel good to do it every day, thank you.
Hi, my name is Harper Raff, I am the student council leader, and I get to help plan fun school events, like kindergarten movie night, the father-daughter dance, and more. Another thing the student council gets to do is help plan future events, and, set an example. I enjoy being a PBIS student leader, because I enjoy how I get to help plan fun school events, I also enjoy being a role model, thank you.
Hi, my name is Shisaki Wainaga, my job, along with my photo, is to organize the book room and return the books where they should be. We also created a box in which everyone is allowed to put books, and we'll put it in the right place instead of them. I enjoy being a PBIS student leader, because it is fun, and we have our own space to be in. And I also like when people thinks us and looks happy. We love that it becomes cleaner after we cleaned it carefully.
Hi, my name is Kojie Oganishi, our job is also to organize and return books in the right place. Sometimes classes come to put the books back where the, where the shelves get messy, so it's easier. I enjoy being a PBIS student leader, because it is fun to put them back in the right place and make them clean. I like to see people happy when we clean the shelves, thank you.
Hi, I'm Aral Lefield, buddy class time is due at Concord this year, and I really enjoy this time. Once a month, the whole school gets together for this native buddy class. My class is paired with Mr. Fong's second grade class. Each time we get together, we do a theme act given for Thanksgiving, when we made a turkey, and for Halloween, we made a witch. I look forward to this date each month, because I have such a connection with my buddy, Clara Bailey. So, for this year, we have made crafts that rocks into each other really good. I get really excited when I get to see Clara out of school and at school. This is the connection I would not make without our buddy class time.
My favorite thing about buddy class time in Ireland is you get to learn new things about her.
Good job.
And as you can see, we got a wonderful group of kids here that do amazing things at Concord, and, like I said before, our goal is to provide them opportunities to be leaders, and also own our building community, and they are all doing a wonderful job doing that, so, at this time, if you have any questions for them, feel free.
Mr. Hayek, could you remind those of us that don't remember what PBIS stands for, what that is, and how this ties in a little bit? Sure, yeah.
It is Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, so, and they're doing a lot of what we call Tier One type of activities, where they're promoting that positive, uh, community positive culture in our buildings.
Thank you.
And maybe you said this at the beginning, is everybody fifth grade, or various grades? Okay, is this all fifth grade? Oh, second grader, okay.
And did you volunteer for this position, get recommended, get, how did you, how did you get to do what you're doing?
It's a little bit of both, we can volunteer to work in a place specifically, or we can get recommended for our good behavior or good grades.
Oh, okay. If you can have them introduce their parents.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Did you all bring someone with you? Do you have a relative or a parent that brought, that you brought with you tonight? Would you like to introduce them to us, so we can thank them for bringing you?
It's a tradition, so.
It's okay, we didn't.
Who'd you bring, Dylan?
I brought my mom and her mother.
Can you tell us their names?
Stacy and Bill.
I brought my mom, Lisa, and my dad Kendall, and my brother Michael.
Thank you.
I brought my mom, Betsy, and my dad, Brian.
I brought my dad Tyler, my brother Liam, and my mom, Brittany.
I brought my mom, Lisa, and my dad Kevin.
I brought my dad Justin and my mom Laura.
I brought my mom, Robin.
I brought my mom, Andrea, my dad, BJ, and my brother, Lloyd.
I brought my mom, Say, my dad, Tomoyuki, and my sisters.
I brought my mom, Yuka, and my sister, May.
I have my mom, Alex, and my dad.
I brought my mom, Erica, and my dad, Brad.
Well, thank you all for bringing your parents tonight.
Yeah.
Hope you guys are good drivers.
That was very good, and thank you for all the work that you all do, I mean, that's truly amazing that you take your free time to help all the students, I think that's wonderful, good job.
I'm sure the kindergarteners love it.
Oh, I can imagine, I bet they do.
Thank you all for coming, you are welcome to stay, but we understand if you don't want to.
Thank you all.
Thank you, parents, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, everybody.
I want how everyone is like, and I will be a role model, and I look at it with the kids, and that way, they're in my school.
Treason, those are the Pop Rocks things, you'll need to sign later if the board approves those.
Okay.
I'll just take them back after you sign them.
Okay. Are they along with the other ones that are already in here?
Uh, I don't know, it's, it's the last item on the agenda, I believe.
Okay. I don't, I don't know that I grabbed the right one, make sure that I did.
This was revised today.
I added, like, this out there.
We'll remind you.
So, do you want my copy?
Or click.
You can add that, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, we can remind you when you get to the... I don't have that current agenda either, but just to save the other one.
Yeah, he's like, this one's been added.
It's right after Boyd's Facebook.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, do we have any? We'll move to consideration of the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, December 9th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox, thank you, Mr. Reddick. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Are there any comments, questions? Mr. Price?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Okay. Moving to the financial report attached and incorporated. Exhibit D is December 2024 SM2, monthly revenue, monthly expenditures, balance, schedule revenues, 5-year forecast. Do we have a motion to review those?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Price?
Overall, we continue to track very well for the fiscal year. Medical claims, we've announced several times that those are up. We did receive several reinsurance checks back because we have quite a few claims that have gone above the first $150,000. So that brings money back in. To our call first, offset that expense and it offset our normal medical expense for the month of December, cut it just about in half.
Oh, wow.
Little good news, bad news.
So that's where any claim over $150,000?
Yes, yep. That's when our reinsurance.
Is that automatic or does it just, it just kicks in automatically?
Yep. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to entertain those.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Then and now, these are items that were submitted prior to getting approval. Mr. Price, uh, do we have a second or first, sorry, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers. Mr. Price?
One for the gifted department, one from Hayner, one from Cookson, and one from the high school. Couple of those are end of the month, so it's a timing issue.
Are there any questions? Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
We have a resolution declaring that the Board of Education of the Troy City School District has reviewed the documents and information prepared by the Chief Fiscal Officer of Troy City Schools for submission to the Budget Commission of Miami County for the alternative tax document format filing provided under Section 5705.281 of Ohio Revised Code and authorized by the Commission for Fiscal Year 2026.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Again, this is an annual two-step process required by law. The county auditor uses this document. However, we do not locally, so it's prepared for their benefit.
Are there any questions? Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
And another resolution authorizing locally funded initiative budget summary be resolved by the Board of Education of the Troy City School District, a majority of its full membership there and concurring that the resolution authorizing locally funded initiative budget summary is set forth in Exhibit F, attached into everyone's agenda and incorporated by reference. Be approved.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
This is associated with the OFCC Elementary Construction Project. This is a summary page that Mr. Piper and myself have to sign off and we're asking for your approval to do so. And it's required by the OFCC to have the board approved and then they sign off on it as kind of a final phase approval of the LFI piece associated with that project. There are several pages kind of behind the scenes, probably somewhere between 100 and 200 pages, if I had to guess.
Just, uh, I'd ask you make sure that you updated. It says it was met special session at 8:00 PM on the second page or basically after the cover page of that. So essentially the first page of the document. Am I looking at an old one?
This? Uh... Yeah, it says.
Yeah.
Met special session at 8:00 PM on the 13th of the day of January.
So I think it's your cover sheet or your, whatever you're gonna fax over.
Ah, okay.
After.
We'll make sure that gets corrected.
Yeah. It's page 49 of the agenda there.
Okay.
So what, so what all is this document doing? Could you just go over it a little bit with us?
This is to certify that we have enough funds, local funds, to cover the LFI portion of the elementary project.
So this is not for the high school project?
No. Well. Yes, it does.
It does, yeah, all locally.
The four new elementaries and the high school project.
This is part of the budget that we had at the very beginning and we created the levy, the bond levy.
Right.
That we indicated which part was for the new building, which part was LFI for the high school and the elementaries.
Correct.
So it hasn't deviated? I mean, the amount's the same, it's just certifying it?
Yes.
Can you explain what the difference between integral and upgrades is?
The integral is the the component within the project with the general guidelines from the OFCC manual. And then the upgrades or anything as far as enhancements to the base. So OFCC manual for construction purposes.
Like brick would be an upgrade, right?
Yes.
So like OFCC has a manual that says.
The integral part would consist of, let's see.
It's kind of the minimum type of materials you can use?
Yeah, but we have to supply LFI dollars like the extra classroom space that we asked for your approval on early on. LFI dollars are used for that extra space, but it's the extra space that meets the minimum standard according to the OFCC construction manual.
Oh, so say we gotta have a classroom that's under square feet. If we're gonna add one, you can't have one smaller than that.
Yes, and there are, there are components of that with the additional square footage that we have to cover with LFI dollars. And then, um... I just lost the other item.
Upgrades?
No.
So an example you had?
Yes. Well, the upgrades are brick enhancement and things like that. The quality of product that goes in above the minimum standard by the OFCC manual.
Turasid.
Yeah, we talked about Turasid, the main entry, things like that, so.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, 'cause I was thinking all the LFI was upgrades, which they all.
Now, the high school project, that is all the LFI project. Once we do the abatement of asbestos, the abatement piece is co-funded for the high school project. Everything else, it's all LFI dollars.
Does OFCC dictate anything to do with the high school project after abatement?
Dictate? No. They are part of the review process and everything and ask questions like the elementary project. And we're utilizing their expertise as we review all that each step to the way. But they don't have the final say. We do more so with that, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Next is a resolution determining to proceed to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil. The adoption of the following resolution is recommended be resolved by the Board of Education of Troy City School District, a majority of its full membership. Resolution determining to proceed to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil is set forth in Exhibit G. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Nope, sorry. Mrs. Borchers and Mr. Reddick?
Sure.
This is the second step, asking for your approval to deliver all the documentation to the Board of Elections in order to put it before the community for an official vote of renewal.
This is the March ballot? May ballot?
May ballot.
As a renewal, correct?
Yes, as a renewal.
Are there any questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
One of the best parts of our meeting, our report of what we have been given.
Just on my line, it's the best part.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You can say it too.
We can all, we can all have it.
It's double, it's double good.
Double good, all right. No, it is, it is a great thing to thank the community for.
Motion.
Oh, sorry.
Motion. First.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Oh, are you motioning? Yeah, I'm making the motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Go ahead.
Uh, so again, it's a great opportunity to thank our community for the support of our kids, our programs, and our staff. You'll, again, you'll see a wide range of donations here from gowns, caps and gloves, all the way up to $5,000 donation. I will point out something that Mr. Price just noticed. The Red Cross and Concord Elementary line item for $625, that was actually a donation from Concord to the Red Cross, not from the Red Cross to Concord. So we'll get that corrected. And Teresa, I gave you my numbers that are revised. So our monthly total is now? Bringing us to a yearly total of? That was well choreographed, thank you.
Thank you. So we are.
Call the rule.
Yeah, call the rule.
Oh, Mr. Price?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Yes. Next, we are requesting to adopt the new revised policies listed below to become effective January 13th of 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Piper?
So this is the same list that we read through at last board meeting. Tonight, I would ask for your approval. Again, it's a lengthy list, a pretty benign list. I won't ask you to sit through another reading through all those policies, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer before you take a vote. Again, pretty benign.
Any discussion?
Nope, I had the discussion last time, thank you.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Next is approving the varsity boys' baseball trip to Emerson, Georgia. I believe they've taken this trip quite a few years.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers, Mr. Fox. Mrs. Dietrich?
To your point, they've gone several years. They've done a nice job with it.
I think this is a fairly.
A fun spring break for all.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
And then we also have overnight trips for Pop Rocks. Those were also received. Again, are these colleges they've gone to before, probably, I'm guessing?
Um, I believe, I believe so. They are, among any of our teams, they're the most well-traveled.
What are these two trips?
Penn State and North Carolina.
So this was added today to the agenda.
North Carolina Chapel Hill.
Yeah, they're going to Chapel Hill and then, yeah, Penn State's the finale.
I feel like they do Penn State regularly.
They've done it, yeah, three, two other, two times that I'm aware of, two other times.
Yeah, if you have the copy from Friday, these were added today. We just received them today. And since they're asking to go in January, why we added them.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
I think we've already discussed it. Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Delva, the floor is yours. Full motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Now the four of us.
Thanks. Pretty light personnel agenda. I like to call this the calm before the storm, so we got a little bit of a lull here and then the spring will pick back up when we get into the hard hiring season. So we just ask that you would approve this really light personnel agenda. It kind of felt bad using up a whole piece of paper.
Nice small business.
Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
We do not have anyone? Is there any?
Mrs. Koeman, I don't think we recognize that you're here tonight, too.
Yes.
So thank you for joining us.
Absolutely. Honestly, I, I, my goal was to not say where the kids felt like, you know, where the story of the show and really proud of the work that they're doing.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Thank you guys for taking care of us tonight. Appreciate it.